Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. This is a call-in meeting today and as such, call-in meetings have very strict procedures and wording. So if you'll forgive me, I will be reading out the briefing for those people watching on the webcast, as well as those present in the meeting room, in terms of how today's meeting is going to take place. So my name is councillor Stuart Galton, I will be chairing today's meeting. This meeting is being webcast for the benefit of any members of the public who may be watching this meeting, I will shortly ask everyone to introduce themselves. Please can everyone remember to mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself, and I will start with the board members themselves.
Good morning, everybody, councillor Abdulhanam Forheadingley-Hay Park.
Hello councillor Kate Hague-Farnley-Wortley.
Good morning councillor Eleanor Thompson-Gaisling-Rothen, substituting for councillor Ali.
Good morning, folks, councillor Adrian McClosky-Farnley-Wortley.
Luke Farley, Labour councillor, Birmingham Toffs, Richmond Hill.
Good morning councillor Annie Maloney, Beeston Hallback.
Morning councillor Mohamed Ekbal, for Honslet and Riverside.
Good morning councillor Zara Usain, Roundy Ward.
Morning councillor Luke Cunningham, Green Party, Armley Ward.
Good morning Norma Harrington, Weatherby Ward.
Good morning councillor Barry Anderson, Adlington-Worftdale Ward.
Thank you very much. We will now invite other contributors to today's meeting to introduce themselves. Please mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself, and we will start with the lead signatory to the call-in and work across the room.
My name's councillor Wayne Dixon, I represent the Middleton Park Ward, and I'm here to present the call-in today.
I'm Laura Fullylove, I'm here representing Harrods Park Bowling Club.
My name's Robert Finnegan, I'm a councillor for the Morley North Ward, and I'm supporting the call-in request.
Good morning, I'm James Rogers, director of Communities Housing and Environment.
Morning, everyone, Mohamed Rafiq, set board member for Climate Energy and Green Spaces.
Good morning, everyone, Polly Kirk, chief officer, Climate Energy and Green Spaces.
Good morning, Tony Stringwell, head of Green Space Operations.
Great, thank you very much. And Sarah on the end?
Good morning, Sarah Blenkin, Legal Services.
Great, thanks. First of all as well, can I also encourage people who have got microphones to bring the microphones further towards them so that we can have clear sound quality, and for those microphones not to be blocked by laptop screens, if possible. Finally, the officers supporting today's meetings are, on my left...
Nikki Deole, head of Legal Services.
And on my right?
Becky Atherton, principal scrutiny adviser.
Thank you. If we have any queries to do with council procedure, these ladies are my main support. We will now move on to the formal items of the business to be discussed today, and the first item is appeals.
There are no appeals today, Chair.
Exclusion of public?
There are no items requiring the exemption of the public.
Item three, late items?
There are no late items, Chair.
Declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests. Do we have any interests declared by participants at the meeting? No, thank you very much, and finally apologies.
We have apologies today from councillor Ali and councillor Thompson, who's attending as a substitute.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Moving on to item six, which is the main item of business, which is the call-in on Crown Greens bowling proposals. Becky will set out how we're going to go forward with that procedure.
Thank you, Chair. The scrutiny board, Environment, Housing and Communities, has received a call-in request in line with the executive and decision-making procedure rules set out in the council's constitution. The call-in request that is being considered today relates to a key decision regarding Crown Green Bowling, the revised proposal. Within the agenda pack, members have been provided with several key documents, including on pages 11 to 17, a copy of the call-in request form, on pages 18 to 20, the delegated decision notice, and pages 21 to 90, the report to the decision-makers and its associated appendices. At the request of the lead signatories to the call-in, members of the scrutiny board have also received further supplementary information in the form of a letter from Leeds Parks Bowls partnership. The scrutiny board is advised that today's meeting is specific to the key decision that has been called in. Issues outside of this decision, including other related decisions, may not be considered as part of the scrutiny board's determination of the outcome of the call-in. There is a recommended structure for today's meeting, which is referenced in paragraph seven of the briefing paper in your agenda pack, and the Chair will set that out shortly. Having reviewed the decision, the scrutiny board will need to agree what action it wishes to take. Members may pursue only one of two courses of action. Option one is to release the decision for implementation. If the scrutiny board chooses this option, the decision will be released immediately and cannot be called in again. Option two is to recommend to the decision-maker that the decision be reconsidered. If the scrutiny board chooses this option, a report of the scrutiny board will be produced and referred to the director of Communities Housing and Environment for consideration. The process for producing this report is set out in paragraphs 14 to 19 of the agenda report. If for any reason the board does not agree one of these actions, option one is adopted by default and the decision is released for implementation and cannot be called in again.
Thanks for that clarification, Becky. Okay, so now I'm going to outline the format of the meeting, so that we know the shape of the discussion. First of all, I'll begin by inviting introductory comments from those members who have asked for this decision to be called in. As multiple political groups were signatories to the call-in request, I have agreed that councillors Dixon and Finnegan will introduce the call-in, and then I will also read out a brief statement provided by councillor Dobson, who is unable to attend today in person. Can I please request that all speakers focus their discussion on the grounds for the call-in and not more general views on bowling? Can I also remind all speakers that you have been advised in advance of today's meeting that introductory comments will be limited to 10 minutes in total? I will then ask members of the scrutiny board whether they have any questions at that stage for those members who have called in the decision. Councillor Rafique and other officers will then be invited to respond to the issues that have been raised in the call-in. Board members will then be given the opportunity to ask any questions and points of clarification of all participants going forward. We also have one witness today, and that is Laura Fullylove from Harrods Bowling Club. While they will not be making additional representations at the start of the meeting, board members are welcome to ask them any direct questions where they believe the answers can add value to their deliberations about the outcome of the call-in. Once the board members have completed their questioning, I will invite councillor Rafique, James Rogers, and then councillor Dixon, or councillor Finnegan, to provide brief closing comments, having heard the board's discussion. The board will then be asked to vote to determine the outcome of the call-in. So, I hope we're all clear with that, any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, so I will now invite councillor Dixon to outline the reasons for calling in this decision, as set out within the call-in request form that he completed. He will then be followed by councillor Finnegan, and then I will read out councillor Dobson's statement. Councillor Dixon?
Okay, before I start, Chair, first of all, thanks for listening to us today, thanks for Becky for organising, and thanks for everyone else agreeing to spend a bit more time at the Civic Hall than you probably want to. But I do feel that the decision to impact on Crown Green Bowls financially in Leeds has not adhered to the principles set out in Leeds City Council's executive and decision-making rules. These rules emphasise transparency, accountability, and alignment with strategic objectives such as community wellbeing, inclusivity, and financial sustainability. However, these proposals will cause closures and fee increases that contradict these fundamental principles in the following ways. First of all, lack of proper consultation and impact assessments. Leeds City Council's decision-making framework requires thorough consultation with affected stakeholders, however, there has been no comprehensive impact assessment regarding the potential closures, and the failure to evaluate the social and financial consequences, particularly on older residents, and this contradicts the council's commitment to evidence-based policy decisions. There's been no formal study to determine how these closures will affect the sport, its participants, and the wider community. This oversight could result in unforeseen social consequences, including reduced physical activity among older people, leading to additional pressure on healthcare services. Secondly, contradiction of council's strategic goals. The decision undermines Leeds City Council's best city ambition and the MAMA city principles, which aim to reduce health inequalities and promote community engagement. Potentially, if these changes are made, it could be closing accessible sporting facilities directly, which contradicts those objectives just mentioned, by disproportionately affecting disadvantaged and elderly residents, and reducing their opportunities for physical and social activities. There's a failure to assess financial implications. While the closures, or potential closures, I'm going to keep saying closures because I believe that's what will happen, are being pursued as a cost-saving measure, no detailed analysis has been conducted to evaluate the long-term financial burden on the council, increased maintenance costs for derelict sites, for example, additional security expenses, and potential rises in healthcare costs due to reduced physical activity amongst older adults, or present financial risks that have not been considered in the decision-making process. This proposed increase in fees, coupled with additional costs such as electricity and water, will place an unsustainable financial burden on Crown Green Bowls clubs, many of which are comprised of pensioners. The resulting financial strain could lead to the closure of more clubs than initially planned. This raises concerns about whether the intention is to make the sport unviable in Leeds altogether. My next point is about disproportionate impact on vulnerable communities. The decision-making rules require the policies do not disproportionately impact disadvantaged communities, however, the closures will have, potential closures, sorry, will have the most significant effect on poorer areas where residents lack the resources to seek alternative sporting opportunities. This exaggerates social inequality and contradicts the council's duty to promote inclusivity and fairness. Unlike other sports where children are offered reduced rates, there is no junior rate for Crown Green Bowls, meaning children pay the same fee as adults. The pricing model discourages youth participation and threatens the long-term future of the sport. Next, lack of transitional planning and support. Effective decision-making involves ensuring smooth transitions when implementing policy changes. The sudden and steep fee increases imposed without a transitional period or financial support leave clubs with no time to adapt, effectively setting them up for failure. The lack of alternative support models demonstrates poor strategic planning. Clubs have received no guidance, financial support, or strategic assistance in growing their membership and promoting the sport. The lack of engagement undermines their sustainability and ensures their decline rather than their development. My next point would be inadequate consideration of alternate solutions. Transparent and accountable decision-making requires exploring alternative decisions before implementing drastic changes. The council has not engaged meaningfully with clubs to develop sustainable funding or maintenance models. The absence of junior pricing and lack of promotional support further indicate a failure to consider long-term sustainability. Many clubs lack the physical ability and manpower to maintain their greens due to the age and physical limitations of their members. Without appropriate support, these potential closures will not only lead to clubs shutting down, but also leave sites in disrepair, increasing council maintenance costs. My next point relates to violation of Leeds 2030 Vision and Better Life Strategy. The Leeds 2030 Vision and Better Life Strategy emphasises improving community wellbeing, reducing health inequalities, and promoting active lifestyles. Closing Crown Greens runs to counter to these goals by reducing access to an affordable, low-impact sport that provides significant social and health benefits, particularly for older residents. My next point I'd like to highlight is insufficient transparency and democratic engagement. I feel the rushed consultation process and lack of transparency in decision-making violate the council's principles of democratic engagement. Decisions affecting community assets should be made with full transparency and input from those directly affected. The failure to provide clear justifications or engage with impacted clubs demonstrates a lack of accountability. So just to conclude, the decision to implement these changes will close Crown Green Bowls Greens in Leeds, and this does not align with the principles of Leeds City Council's executive or decision-making rules. It lacks proper consultation, contradicts key strategic goals, fails to assess financial risks, disproportionately impacts vulnerable communities, and demonstrates inadequate transparency. A more collaborative and evidence-based approach is necessary to ensure the sustainability of Crown Green Bowls while uploading the council's core values of fairness, inclusivity, and social responsibility. The proposed closures and fee increases for Crown Green Bowls in Leeds are short-sighted and counterproductive. The policy contradicts key council initiatives and will ultimately result in a greater financial cost, reduced community cohesion, community engagement, and increased inequality. A more considered and collaborative approach is required to ensure the sustainability of the sport, while aligning with Leeds City Council's broader social and economic objectives. I feel this has been done to the bowling clubs rather than with them, and it shows the concern when all political parties, apart from the administration, have united against this call-in today, and all have been signatories to it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dixon. I'd now ask councillor Finnegan for his statement, please.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for the opportunity to turn up this morning and support this call-in request. I am aiming to explain a little bit more about our concerns about the disproportionate impact on older residents across the Leeds City Council area, and there are some numbers perhaps we need to reflect upon that aren't necessarily in the papers. Five per cent, which is the council tax increase people are facing across Leeds, 6.4 per cent, that's the rise in the energy cap, so we're all paying more for our gas and electricity. Twenty-six per cent, that is the increase Yorkshire Water are wanting for what most would regard as an inadequate service. Six point two to six point four per cent, which is a price increase for mobile and broadband bills, that's what they're going up. A hundred per cent, that's the increase in the season ticket price that has been proposed at this particular point to go bowling in Leeds. Two hundred or three hundred, that's the amount that has been taken away from many pensioners in terms of their winter fuel payments. Twelve thousand five hundred and seventy, which is the tax threshold, which means most pensioners get drawn in to paying tax at this particular point. Now, the health benefits of...
Councillor Finnegan, can you pause for a second, please? Councillor Hague?
Chair, I just feel that we're straying somewhat from the decision-making process that led to this decision.
Thank you councillor Hague.
Can I respond to that if I may, Chair? The argument is...
Councillor, if you can...
Focus it.
Is this an introductory element where you will get to the point about the decision?
Well, I need to prove the case that it disproportionately impacts on older residents, and you need those figures to be able to analyse whether it does disproportionately impact on older residents. So I don't think it's making a political point in any shape, way, or form, I'm not attributing blame for these rises, I'm just saying this is the impact on older residents. And as we know, the demographic for people who do bowl is an older demographic at this particular point. Last number before I go specifically on to some of the arguments is seven, and seven were the alternative amendments that the council was offered at the budgeting meeting, which would mean you wouldn't have to make this particular decision. Now, the health benefits of bowling are clearly recorded at this particular point, and taking into account that it is by and large an older demographic, then the advantages of gentle exercise, becoming mentally active, which clearly has an impact in reducing the potential for dementia, and dealing with social isolation is something that is very relevant, and certainly if we offer those opportunities to older residents across Leeds, then we will see a reduction in terms of the impact on the NHS and the impact on adult social care. So I think on reflection, this is a disproportionate impact on older residents, there are alternatives that this board can consider, and as such, support the call-in proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Finnegan, I was being, what's the word, very permissive there, because some of the issues that you raise obviously are about whether or not the decision itself is right, as opposed to how the decision has actually been made. And as the discussion goes forward within the scrutiny meeting, we will have to concentrate on how the decision was made, not whether we disagree with the decision that has been made, if you can differentiate the two. So it's just, you've been given a licence to offer your perspective at this point, but going forward, the questioning will be more on that. I will now read out the statement from councillor Mark Dobson, which will involve a certain amount of shape-shifting, because I'm reading it verbally, as it's written. I am councillor Mark Dobson, and I am leader of Garforth and Swillington Independence. In 2015, I was the executive board member with responsibility for Parks and Countryside, which included the provision of Crown Green Bowling. At that time, the council was five years into the previous government's austerity programme, and the local authority were looking to make cuts in costs over a variety of service areas. Specifically, in terms of bowling, I took the view that the exercise should involve not only getting the council to a cost-neutral position, but also to secure the long-term viability of bowling across the city. This was achieved by a sometimes painful negotiation with the bowling community to ensure that the fees were raised to allow the council to achieve that cost-neutral position. That should have been a generational piece of work, and I am deeply surprised that a mere 10 years later, this service area has been put forward for a toxic cocktail of radical cuts and fee increases. There are some questions for the board to consider. Number one, assuming for a moment council figures are correct, why was this not reviewed year on year in terms of the annual fee structure to ensure that the council maintained its cost-neutral position? Point two, why has this been left a decade without it, it would appear, any due diligence to ensure that the bowling provision remained robust and financially viable? Point three, as the council agreed with the bowling community a decade ago as part of the revised fee package, what did the department do to subsequently promote the sport, if anything? Who is responsible for a decade's worth of drift where the work that was achieved in 2015 has effectively been unpicked and the situation made worse through another decade of neglect? It would appear to the layperson that the bowling provision in the city has been allowed to wither on the vine, and we have now got to the situation where members will have to pay a massive hike in fees, and sub-clubs will simply become unsustainable due to the caveat around the increasing membership. I have never known a consultation where the consultation findings have led to a worse outcome than what was initially proposed, and this revised proposal is simply a mechanism to decimate and destroy the sport over the next few years. Clubs in more deprived areas will not be able to afford the fees, and clubs that do manage to keep membership numbers buoyant and have a membership that can pay the fees will still be decimated by the impact upon having no viable leagues in which to play. It would appear to my group that the council have constructed these latest proposals in such a way to effectively preside over a managed decline of the sport, and it will not take long. I would ask the board to consider if Leeds is really the best city in which to grow old, if Leeds really does have best city aspirations, what that means, indeed, rather than in soundbites. Finally, I would strongly urge the board to return this to the decision-makers for further consideration. That is the statement from councillor Dobson. I will now move on to questions for those call-in signatories present, and of course, Laura Fullylove as representation of Bowls Clubs. Councillor Hague?
Thank you, my question's to councillor Dixon, and relates to his criticism of the consultation. I think we're more used to council being criticised for not changing its views as a result of consultation, rather than actually changing them. Did you attend any of the consultations, as I did, and participate in any other way in it? And do you think that, as councillor Dobson said in his submission, that this is a worse outcome than closing the clubs, which was part of the original consultation?
So for your first question, yes, I did attend the consultation, I attended the initial one at the John Charles Centre for Sport, and I've been in contact with my local club since then, because I was really worried that two out of three were earmarked for closure. Do I think this is a worse scenario than what was initially proposed? Yes, because I think it'll close more clubs than the previous proposal. Hopefully I'm wrong, but that's my gut feeling, is that a lot of the clubs will close because they won't get the numbers of members needed, mainly.
Do you have a follow-up, councillor Hague? Councillor Anderson?
Need a bit of latitude here.
Councillor Anderson, I won't let you ask five questions in a row. If we'd have them one at a time, I will come back to you for your second question, if that's all right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine. We've all got community committees. To the best of your knowledge, was this debated at any community committees at all? So that we could get, because my concern is the lack of elected member involvement in taking this forward. Because I acknowledge that there is financial pressures on the council, I don't dispute that under any circumstances whatsoever, but were you aware of any community committee that met, discussed it, and submitted any proposals to it? To the review?
I can't answer for any other community committee other than the one I'm on, which is the Inner South Community Committee, but it was never brought to that, as far as I'm aware.
So can the...
Councillor Anderson?
So to follow up to that?
If you'll give me a licence, I can ask other board members if it did go to their community committee, to their recollection. Thank you, I've got councillor Farley.
Thanks, Chair, yeah, I mean, this is a couple of points, and a question for councillor Dixon. Throughout your statement, you made reference to the fact that in your view, there's been no full impact assessment or study around this decision-making, but then you make a number of assertions with regards to its impact and what you think is presented as fact. Whereabouts do you get that information from? And then secondly, just a point of fact, the proposals... And then, secondly, just a point of fact, the proposals do actually include a junior rate that's listed in the paperwork that we've received today for this meeting. So that feels to me as though-
Pardon?
So that feels to me as though that's a point of accuracy.
Councillor Farley, was that directed to anyone in particular, or would you like anybody to answer? It was councillor Dixon, thank you.
No, thanks for those questions, because they're valid points. So where do I get my information from? Listening to the clubs. I know several of them, obviously local. I've been in conversations with Laura, the bowling authorities, and all of them are saying that that's the impact it'll have. And I've never run a bowling club, those people have, so if I'm going to believe anybody, I'm going to believe those people. And I appreciate it's not solid evidence, but I feel that if anybody knows what impact these changes will have on a club, it's the people who are running them. And as for the junior rate, as far as we're aware, that only counts if you've got a full club of juniors. So if you've got one junior rate, and a particular junior rate for one child, yeah, one young person, I'm happy to be corrected if that's wrong, but that's what the clubs are feeding back to me. So obviously, if that is not the case, then the clubs are not getting the correct information clarified to them.
Okay, we can get that clarified later on from the officers, if that's okay. Any further questions at this point? I'm afraid unless you're asked a question directly- Yeah, yeah. Councillor Farley, would you like Laura to answer that question? No, at this point? Okay. Councillor Anderson?
The chief officer or the author of the report, did they address and give you justification as to why they were correct and you were wrong, in terms of the assertions that they made? And if so, can you explain what the tenor of the conversation was?
Thanks very much councillor Anderson. We did. We had a full and frank discussion with the Parks and Countryside staff at this particular point. And fundamentally, the disagreement is over the fact that we think it disproportionately impacts on older residents, for the reasons that we've already provided. And the Parks and Countryside team don't agree with us on that particular analysis. Ultimately, this is down to a subjective, not an objective, approach. Now, whether there is a specific impact statement on what it does to older residents, well, if there is, I haven't actually seen it. I don't think it actually exists. I think the bottom line is, it is fundamentally a disagreement. A lot of this is down to your perception of the older community. Now, there are some people who have a perception that the older community are bags of cash and can pay whatever. That is not our particular perception, and I don't think that you can solidly evidence that that is the case. So fundamentally, we have a disagreement about its impact. There is a suggestion from the department that the impact is less significant than we think it is, and that's why we've signed the call-in, and why we want it to be reconsidered. Because ultimately, if the committee have a view, they refer it back, and it just runs through those particular processes again. And perhaps specifically looks at the impact that it has on older residents. And at that particular stage, that would seem to me to be good decision-making. So that's really fundamentally why we disagree. They've explained, and we are sympathetic to the fact that they're under very difficult financial circumstances. But there are alternatives. There are at least seven alternatives to introducing this, and we think that they need to be explored further, and that we need, again, to go back and specifically look at the impact on older residents. Thanks Chair.
You're allowed one more before I bring in councillor Cunningham.
To my attention, throughout all of this, was the accuracy of a lot of the information that was being provided by the council. Namely, the example I'll give you, in terms of the maintenance costs, as to how often greens were or were not cut, and what was or was not included in the maintenance agreements. Based on the conversations you've had with officers, are you now satisfied of the accuracy of the information that was used to make the final decision? Or are there still concerns that you've got, that there is a contention over the accuracy of information?
Sorry, who was that directed to councillor Anderson?
Hi.
Thank you Laura.
There's any bowler that will tell you that those costs are severely inflated, and we've not received that level of service since the 90s. It's been generous with the cuts that we've had specifically at Errol's Park, disregarding the fees for transport and the, sorry, where is it? So it's the transport and the other one that's £800.
Laura, are you looking at the agenda papers?
Sorry, I'm just looking at their actual costs that the council had provided per green.
Oh, sorry. I thought if it was an agenda paper, we could know what the page was, so we could all look at it.
Sorry, no. So they've got about £1,600, which was for plank costs and for travel or transport. But disregarding those, I worked out the cost of about £1,800 to £1,900 that we received last year on our summer green, using their hourly rates, which coincidentally matches the minimum figure of 20 players per green at £90 each. That is not a coincidence, I feel.
Okay, councillor Anderson? Councillor Cunningham?
Thanks Chair. I was going to ask a similar question, but I'd also like to ask Laura. I know we've touched upon the older bowlers, but I'm also interested in the widening participation, encouraging new members. And I just wondered if you had any comments on the junior membership, and whether that has barriers to younger people joining and taking up the bowling?
Well, this will answer Luke Farley's question earlier as well. So regarding the juniors, we know that the fees are £45. They've been proposed to be half the £90 fee. But what it doesn't say, or it does, it says that the minimum of 20 members is for adult members only. So if you had a club that had 20 junior members, they would then have to pay £90 each, because they would not fulfil the requirement. So they would inadvertently be required to pay the £90 each if they had 20 members. So that's the simple answer to that question, and why juniors are impacted. But actually, Yorkshire has the best junior county teams that there is in the country. They're winning it year after year. But obviously, in Errol's, where we are specifically, you know, we're in one of the deprived areas of the country, they love to come and play bowls. We've hosted hundreds of open days over the last four or five years. We know people love it, but to ask them to pay a family of four £270 to just be able to access that provision is just totally unaffordable. Now, this proposal is not just for league bowling. This is proposed for anybody who wants to play bowls, even in a social aspect. So of course, if you've got a family that can go kick a ball on a park for essentially the cost of a football, or they're going to go play bowls at Errol's Park, it's going to cost their family £270. Now, are families really going to be able to afford that at this time? It's absolutely not. And the same goes for the older people, obviously. Even just to play socially, we are just going to decimate this sport, because there's going to be no grassroots available. It's essentially all being governed by charges. And how can you grow a sport for anyone and encourage anyone to play if it's just totally unaffordable, and there is no other sport or activity in any Leeds park that is doing that at the moment?
Thank you Laura. I see that the officers are making notes around the specific areas of clarification that you were asked, and I assume they'll be coming back with that. Councillor Farley?
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, just to confirm, the visa junior rate of £45, despite what has been presented to this committee? That's correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions for the call-in signatories to begin with? Councillor McClosky?
Just wanted to add, you mentioned there that this isn't happening to any other sport. I play badminton, and our rates are going up. And I just noticed on page 55 of the papers that went out, all the sports that have to contribute.
Sorry, do you play badminton in the parks?
No. Laura? No, what I'm saying is, all sports are subject to costs and contribution to Leeds City Council's funding. And you mentioned that other sports weren't affected. Other sports are getting increases in costs, that's what I'm saying. So why would any one sport be different?
Councillor McClosky, that question is for who of the signature?
Sorry, it's for any of the people going-
Councillor Finnegan?
Happy to deal with that. To be honest, I understand and appreciate councillor Farley's question, but if we were to take, like grassroots football, and the contributions that they can get from the Football Foundation, and similar things happen with Rugby Union and Rugby League. Now, with the best will in the world, as much as I'd love it, I can't see there being a Premiership or a European League of bowling at this particular stage. So the capacity for bowling to be able to find additional finance is somewhat reduced in comparison to people like football, Rugby League, Rugby Union, to a lesser degree, cricket. So I think it is particularly a special case that needs to be reflected upon. We accept that all grassroots teams in our areas, whatever sport they actually play, are finding it more and more difficult. Some have better options in terms of drawing in outside finance than others. And with the best will in the world, I don't think bowling has those particular options. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Finnegan. Any further questions? Councillor Hague?
Question to councillor Dixon. If you look at the consultation, it's clear from it, and also from my own experience of talking to bowlers, that they did understand a need for a rise in costs, many of them. And in fact, the consultation is overwhelmingly in support of those higher costs, and in fact, in some cases, an even higher charge than is actually being proposed. So when you're saying that, when you're putting forward a case that the fees are going to make support unsustainable, the evidence seems to be from those consultants, including those who play and are season ticket holders, that they do accept that a higher cost is reasonable.
Sorry, councillor Hague, was there a particular page in the agenda you were looking at there that we can all refer to? Well, I'll let councillor Dixon have a look, respond while we're looking for the specific page. Page 43, thank you.
Don't want me to come in now Chair.
Let's come in councillor Dixon.
Yeah, thanks again for your question on the consultation. I suppose people were kind of faced with, with closure green or you pay more. And I think when the questions are framed that way, people are going to say, well, I'll have to click pay more, won't I? So I kind of feel that people congeled into that answer. But I also feel that the consultation could have been pulled out a lot longer. It could have been presented within bowling clubs themselves, but it was done out of season. But I would have liked to have seen paper copies on the side of the bowling greens, get real reflection of what people think. I think the consultation pulled in probably a majority of committee members of clubs, and people who may not even have been involved with bowling, but just like answering service, who knows? But I feel it could have been done more. And even if it's correct that the consultation has reflected what people think, I think the fact that in February, we're asking what people think, and then two months later, we're saying, right, you're going to pay it this year, is probably not the greatest way to do it. And the fact that it's an 100% increase, rather than a gradual increase, which I think could have been a better way to go. I also feel that it would have given us more time to reflect to bowling clubs and say, what can we do to reduce the impact of the cost going up to £90? And it would give clubs time to look at how they fundraise that money, for example, and could they get more sponsorship and that kind of thing. And yeah, so I just feel the consultation was a bit rushed, which is probably the biggest issue I have with the whole thing, if I'm honest. Because it's just, the impact's bigger because of how quick it's coming in. Sorry.
Thank you councillor Hague.
In the papers, the statistics relating to the consultation do say that it was well responded to, and has a statistical reliability of plus or minus 2%, which is quite high. And also, that large numbers of season ticket holders did respond to the consultation. And it was held over a number of weeks, and they were also in-person once. So a third of the members of respondents to the consultation were a member of an LCC club. And again, one in three, nearly one in three, had an LCC season ticket. So the bowling community did respond to the consultation in large numbers. So I think we can believe what the consultation tells us in terms of statistics.
Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, just on that. I think what we're missing is the people who it will really impact. For example, our local consultation was at the John Charles Centre for Sport. There is no public transport to get there. And for example, in my local, one of my local clubs, Cranmore Bowling Club, they have three members there that are over 90 and don't drive. They were never going to get to that consultation. And similarly, if their club gets closed, there probably won't be bowling as well, for that reason.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Briefly, are you aware of any consultation that was taking place with potential bowlers? I mean, it's fine, we've talked about the people who are currently there just now, but to identify whether there is demand for this service throughout the city, and then as such, we can then expand it accordingly. Are you aware of any consultation that's taken place? That can be any of the three of you can answer that particular question, if you're aware of anything that's been done.
Hi. I highlighted this in the in-person consultations. I attended every single one of them, so I've got them ingrained in my brain, to be honest. But it took over a week, and after 1,200 responses of them, to then share it on their social media platform, to actually make it public. It was designed for just 200 spaces at these in-person meetings originally, to attend. So that by no means was a public consultation to start with, just on that basis. So yes, it was shared on Leeds Parks and Countryside Facebook page that had 6,000 followers, and then subsequently shared on Leeds City Councils towards the end of it. And we already know that the bulk of them responses had already been received due to officers' responses within those in-person meetings.
Councillor Finnegan?
Just to add to that, I've got two clubs that have proposed for closure in my patch, Chirwell and Gildersum at this particular point. And certainly, if you were to speak to them about the consultation, they would argue that it's fundamentally flawed. Why is it flawed? Well, a lot of the people, again, we've talked about the older demographic and their access, in terms of online and being able to be computer savvy, is somewhat reduced. So you don't necessarily get the full flavour of that particular consultation. But certainly, both of those groups are working hard at this particular point, on social media and otherwise, to increase their membership, and certainly on both. They have increased membership numbers, which will continue- They have increased membership numbers which will continue to increase, obviously making it hopefully more viable for them to continue.
Thank you. I think that brings to, oh councillor Hague.
I just want to question councillor Finnegan about his point about older residents not being online. A number of, a large number of the surveys were, were online. Fifty per cent of them were in the 65 plus age group, which is the target demographic that we're talking about for bowling here. I'm not saying everyone who bowls over 65. So, and also there were a number of non-bowlers who presumably might have had an interest in taking up the sport, who completed the survey. So I don't think it's fair to say that, that there was, there were barriers, too many barriers in terms of age when 50% of the respondents are over 65 to you.
Councillor Finnegan?
I'm a little surprised at that really. We finance locally lots of classes for grey surfers and other such things to make sure that they can access, because they do not feel confident in terms of accessing the internet and being online at that particular point. And certainly we get a good attendance from those classes. And if you were to go to Moll the Elderly Action and talk to them about online and all the rest of it, there's a good chunk of them, a significant chunk of them, that would say, don't understand it, don't go anywhere near it, can't do it at this particular point. I mean, indeed, just, just as a bit of a meandering, I have a 65-year-old who came in to me and wants to understand, because she has no access to the internet, how to fill in a housing benefit claim form for Leeds City Council. Good luck with that, I suggested to her. I mean, we will do it ultimately, but it's a question of having other people stand in for you. And even though there are some, certainly those who are better healed, who will have access to online, those who tend to be at the poorer end tend to struggle more.
Okay, thank you councillor. I think we're going to move on now to the officers. So I'm going to hand over to councillor Rafik, James Rogers and Polly Cook. Who would like to present your counter statements?
Okay, thanks Chair. I'll start off and then Polly and Tony will, will come in, if that's okay. Any better? Okay, thank you, thank you Chair. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight some of the headline points before handing over to my colleagues to go over the details of, of the proposals. Leeds City Council, like councils across the country, is facing an unprecedented level of financial challenges, in part due to the rising cost of delivering services. But most notably due to the failure of the previous government to adequately fund local authorities. The council has had to deliver savings totaling nearly 800 million in addition to government cuts from 2010 to 2024, 25 financial years. This current financial year alone, which is 2526, we are having to deliver budgetary savings of over 103 million. The ongoing review of Crown Green Bowling Provision is just one measure the council is taking, considering the ongoing financial challenges we face. I would like to begin by recognizing the strong heritage of Crown Green Bowling in Leeds, which sees participation citywide. There are notable mental and physical health benefits for those participating, as well as fostering social inclusion. To clarify, the council is not seeking to remove all provision, rather is seeking to greater cost recovery in bowling provision across the city, whilst ensuring there are good quality greens across the city as well. There are currently 61 greens which are managed through annual season tickets, taking, which take around under £50,000. Meaning the council is currently subsidizing the bowling by £360,000 a year. The initial proposal was for the potential closure of around half of the city's greens by April of this year. However, following the consultation with the clubs, the council has recognized that a tighter timeline would create too much immediate disruption to the sport. Therefore, the council committed to maintaining all greens until the end of the summer season. We will be working with clubs during this time to ensure they are prepared to meet the minimum membership numbers, as well as reducing the level of subsidy resulting in an increase in the cost of a season ticket and cost recovery for the utilities clubs use. Initially, there is an option for clubs to take direct responsibility for the maintenance of all their facilities. Just responding to some of, some of the questions made already. As part of the consultation, all ward members were contacted and offered meetings. In 2024, I think we had 10 junior members across the whole city, according to our records. I would also like to put in record that as a city, and I'm proud to say this as, as a council, we've got one of the biggest bowling provisions outside the city of London. And I'm confident that following the current consultations and the work we're doing, we will still be, that will still be the case. I will now stop there and hand over to Polly and Tony to go through some of the more details. Thank you.
Okay. So last year, the council received £48,000 in season ticket fees against a cost base of £360,000, which equated to a subsidy of £310,000. In percentage terms, this is the equivalent of 87% of the cost being subsidized. Under the new proposal that we're discussing today, the subsidy level should reduce to nearer 50%. However, there's been lots of discussion about other sports and how that sits. So just to provide some context, football and rugby are only subsidized to between 10 to 20%. And just picking up on councillor Finnegan's point earlier about the kind of external support that comes in from the different associations, that's not taken into account there. That is what people are paying and that is against our revenue costs. So it's a like-for-like comparison. Through the consultation, there were lots of different points that came through. But some of the most notable were the fact that people played across multiple clubs and that actually competitive bowling was really important to the community. And actually, that, the variety of clubs being retained was really key to allowing that competitive bowling to continue to flourish. Another point was about season tickets were not representative of usage of clubs. But unfortunately, that is the only measure the council has to go on. And that is the only data that we have in terms of, of usage and the source of income. There were suggestions made from the bowling community around removing second greens at clubs as an alternative. And there was also a really strong interest in self-maintenance. We've tried to reflect all of those in the amended proposal that came through. As all, as has already been discussed, the consultation questionnaire showed a strong leaning towards cost recovery rather than closure or mergers. And 48% were prepared to pay between £50 and £99, but 35% were prepared to pay over £100, with 15% even being prepared to pay over £150. The fundamentals of the new proposal are to increase the season ticket from £45 to £90 for annual membership. And we've talked about the junior membership as well. In terms of value for money, this still represents about £3.50 per week if you only bowl in the summer season and less than £2 if you bowl all year round. Multiple people told us throughout the consultation that they bowled multiple times per week. So at worst case scenario, you're looking at about £3.50 per time. But actually, for a lot of people, it could be significantly less. Currently, there are a number of clubs who are declaring season ticket numbers of less than 20. And there's three that haven't even, are not even in double numbers. It's not sustainable for the council to maintain a green at a subsidy. So in this specific incident of over £500 per season ticket holder at sites on face value appear to be utilized. There's currently no incentive for a club to convert social users to season ticket holders. The introduction of a minimum membership number for 2526 and then a higher target for 2829 does provide an incentive and allows us to work to grow the sport. Currently, clubs pay £50 towards utilities. So the second part of the proposal is to ask for full cost recovery for electricity in 2526 and water the following year. However, how this works will differ from club to club because there are clubs that are sharing their facilities either with our staff or other organizations. And no club will be asked to pay beyond what they use. Over half of clubs already have smart meters and work is underway to ensure that clubs all have access to meters and are clear how it is monitored. There is more work to do on water metering and standing charges. And for this reason, the council will continue to cover the costs this year while that work is undertaken. Following the publication of the decision report, a meeting has been offered to every club on an individual basis. To date, the team have met 27 clubs with more meetings scheduled in. There are a number of clubs who are keen to self-maintain and the team are working this through with them on an individual basis. There are also clubs who have agreed that they do not need their second green. There has been a lot of positive dialogue and individual clubs proposing ways to grow their own membership or to generate income. Although we will work with the various governing bodies and clubs, the responsibility for membership growth doesn't sit with the council. This is the same across all sports and is not specific to bowling. As both the letters from the Leeds Bowls Parks Partnership and councillor Dobson referred quite heavily to the history related to Crown Green Bowling, Tony's just going to provide a bit of a potted history from 2014 for now. And also just to give a bit of a focus on maintenance and machinery again, because they've both been referred to a couple of times.
Thank you. So bowling green has been the subject of a number of reviews, commencing in 2013, again in 2020, and then obviously the most recent review in 2025. During this period, the authorities consistently highlighted that the sport as a whole is subsidized and that supply outstrips demand. The recurring strategy has been to consult and then develop strategies in response. Through each review, the preference has been to improve cost recovery, which has on occasion been supported by incremental closures of greens. Since 2013, six greens have closed, further three then closed from 2016, and then we had one that's moved to self-maintenance. And consistently, the income that's been recovered from season ticket sales has been under that that was originally set out inception of the season ticket, which went to executive board in 2013. On each of those occasions and with each of those reviews, the council has sought to set out an indicative maintenance budget for bowling greens that includes a realistic and anticipated budget cost for the maintenance of each green. We try to recover material costs and labor costs and ensure that's reflected and have a cost basis to reflect the fact that we have 61 greens to maintain citywide, which in turn brings some logistical challenges that we need to address. We recognize that, that clubs do support the authority and often pick up some tasks and are very committed to their pavilion. And it's really encouraging that a lot of clubs have a very good working relationship with their local gardener, with their officer, who we look to make as available as possible to meet with the clubs and respond to maintenance tasks and ideas that they have and want us to prioritize as much as we possibly can. Despite the numerous reviews that have been undertaken, the authority has always taken its responsibilities to bowling green maintenance seriously. And the investment into new bowling green machinery that's referenced in the scrutiny papers today is a reflection of that commitment. That equipment that was purchased is very specialist. And our intention as we go through this year is to supplement that by the purchase of further specialist equipment that focuses on those other tasks that we need to undertake, such as scarification, again, reference to verticutting and other things that are referenced in the paperwork. It's a deliberate strategy to move towards more specialist and move away from more generic machinery. But that commitment towards maintenance has always been there. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that information and introduction. I now will hand over to board members again, who can now offer further questioning of council officers and the call in applicants as well. Councillor Anderson.
I'll ask the question that I partially asked earlier on. Other than with, other than councillor Rafik, which other members, elected members were part of making this decision? And did you ever consider having a cross-party working group to look at alternatives to be set up to enable this taking forward?
Is that to councillor Rafik?
Councillor Rafik. And the other part would be to the officers, who would make the decision as to who to consult and who not to consult. I don't think councillor Rafik made that level of detail, because I would have thought that's more operational, but he may have made that decision.
James Rogers?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Anderson, this decision ultimately was an officer delegate decision undertaken in accordance with the normal constitutional decision-making arrangements. And councillor Rafik, as the relevant executive member, was briefed on that. And there were no other formal member arrangements beyond the consultation process that went through with members.
And in that instance then, don't you think due to the controversy of it, it would have been beneficial to have taken it to a wider number of people to get views? And so that any concerns could have been expressed before you went public on it? Because we've now got this avalanche of issues being raised with it. If you'd brought it, say, to scrutiny and said to scrutiny, can you help get this sorted out? I'll give you an example, and I said this to Polly, not directly on this one, but giving a degree of latitude. When you were introducing car parking charges, I said if you'd brought that to scrutiny, scrutiny might have been able to come up with a way of implementing it that wasn't going to cause as much havoc. So I would put the same challenge down. If you'd brought it to scrutiny, scrutiny would have had a debate like we can have today. And we would have come up with a view, and if you're looking at it from a political point of view, there are a majority of Labour members to opposition members. So their views would still carry due weight. It would have resolved some of the problems you're now facing. And if you'd, when you, when your consultation didn't get what you wanted and you decided to review it, why didn't you ask us as a scrutiny board, just have a quick look at it, just to check, to see if there are any other issues or problems that we could foresee? And you could then have reflected that back before you went back for your, with your revised set of proposals?
Thank you councillor Anderson. Probably worthwhile just reminding members that in terms of a budget proposal, along with all of the budget proposals that get considered and come before council, this was first made as a proposal to members of the executive board. It was then as a proposal that was also discussed at scrutiny board as a full list of proposals that came. It then went back to executive board and it's also been to full council. So I think in terms of wider member involvement, there's been lots of opportunities for members to contribute to this decision overall.
Can I just ask for clarification? When does a decision stop being the original decision, if you see what I mean? So I think one of the, one of the points which has been made today is there was an original proposal which was for specific sites to potentially be closed. And after that consultation, the secondary proposals actually end up being something which affects every site, which was not something which was anticipated in the original budget proposal that we as a scrutiny board looked at. I think that's part of the conundrum here in terms of the current position that we're in, in terms of cost recovery being emphasized more than reduction in outlay in terms of the reduction in bowling greens. Do you see what I mean? Thank you Polly.
Just to be absolutely clear, from when we consulted at the first time, there were always two options on the table. So the one that got the media attention was the closures, but it was, there were two options. And that was what was presented at all the consultation events, that there were different options. So obviously, the minute you talk about closing a club, that's what everybody runs with. But there were two options on the table and the opportunity for people to present other options at that stage. So the proposal has evolved through the consultation process. But actually, it's not, you know, it's not so fundamentally different because really the base proposal was about reducing costs by £140,000 and trying to find a way to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? councillor Hague?
Yes, thank you. In terms of the changes that are proposed, there's, there's some measurements of success in the paper. But I would say first that councillor McCluskey took the opportunity of the consultation to have further meetings with, with clubs in our own ward. And I actually think it's been a welcome opportunity to open up conversations about how clubs engage with the community and what more can be done by them to support people and also by us to support them. So I would like to actually say that was a really welcome opportunity. But in terms of success measurement, as stated on page 29 of the papers, closures of clubs to be minimized, membership to be increased, greater cost recovery of maintenance and utility costs, facilitation of clubs operating independently of the council where they want to, and improved collaboration. and improved collaboration with national, regional governing bodies. Do you think that actually the consultation and this process has led to us achieving our budget savings, which regretfully we still have to make, but also actually having a more sustainable footing for bowling going forward in the city?
That's certainly the aspiration and what we're intending. I think all the time we're still in the era of there isn't a final decision. It makes it more challenging, but there's been, as I said at the beginning, there's twenty seven clubs that we've met. You know, a lot of those meetings have been really positive. Some have said that they're so comfortable, actually they don't want a meeting. So, you know, that, that's going to be varied and we're going to have to do a lot more work with some clubs in order to get them to a place of where they feel as comfortable. But, you know, that is the aspiration for all of us.
And at this time, have any clubs been earmarked for closure?
No, I'll be totally frank, there's some clubs that are more worried about whether they will get to the numbers and we're carrying on the conversations with those clubs and we'll continue to work with them. But there's no clubs earmarked for closure.
Councillor Farley.
Thanks, Chair. Throughout the, throughout the calling, the, the, there's been suggestion that there are, there are alternatives to the proposal that has been made. Councillor Finnegan made reference to alternatives put forward at the budget meeting. I've just had a look through them, five of them are the same proposal. And the other two was councillor Lam's AI. And the final one, I think, was capital, a capital investment, which wouldn't impact on this. But throughout the consultation, obviously the conversations that you have been having with the clubs, have there been any alternative proposals or viable suggestions that might be taken forwards? I've just been skimming through kind of some of the, some of the costs kind of for the, for the private clubs around the country, as well as comparing it, say, for example, membership of active leads or membership of a golf club run by the council. And obviously those costs are significantly higher than what's being proposed. But I do wonder, is, is there, is there, would it be an alternative to look at charging for social use rather than direct membership, you know, for example, you know, five pound a go or something? Which strikes me that it probably would cost more to individuals doing it. But yeah, I suppose it comes back to the, my initial point is, were any viable alternatives put forwards?
Okay, so in paragraph fifty six of the report, we pulled out some of the other options that were put forward. So club independence, stroke, self-maintenance, so that was, is now part of the revised proposal. There was one about making savings money elsewhere in our CC budget, which we said wasn't viable. Increasing membership and promoting the sport, obviously we were trying to do that with the minimum membership. Utilising grants, sponsorship and fundraising. So we're looking at the way that we do that. We've already started discussions with planning about what will be allowable. So there's a really clear message and, and way for clubs to be able to do that in terms of their sites. Tiered or monthly payment options was also put forward. And because we only ask for payment at the end of the season, that is within the gift of clubs to be able to, to do. Find efficiencies in maintenance and utilities. And fundamentally, if people are paying the utilities they use in the building, I think that, that will naturally come. Closure of second greens, I mentioned at the beginning, again, that, that is an option that is being explored. So those were some of the options that were put forward, that were considered and we've tried to build them in to the proposal as best as we could.
Councillor Anderson.
Right, to continue, I was going to answer, but to continue on that line. So you've just outlined in paragraph fifty six, some alternatives that were looked at. You've not put any figures beside those as to what could be the anticipated savings. Because they're no more or less accurate than the ones that you are claiming are or are not going to happen. They're all best guesses because none of us, well, unless you're going to know the numbers of the lottery winner. So the question I'd ask is, have you, these are the ones that have come up by the people who responded. What about the ninety nine councillors? How many of them were asked for their opinion? I personally did have some suggestions, but because I've been a councillor since nineteen ninety nine and I know that anything that an opposition member says usually gets ignored and as if we were coming from another planet half the time, I didn't bother submitting my thoughts into the thing because it is disrespectful to me because I've got just as much say as other people. I've got some good ideas how these things should be done. There's a lot of people cross-party could come up with ideas and we're not being given the opportunity. And finally, on that point, one size does not fit all. We need to look at the individual greens as to what is needed to be done there to make them efficient. Some will have the numbers, fine, so that's not a problem. In other cases, we need to ask what can we do to market it better locally? That's another way we can do it. In terms of, in terms of sponsorship, we need you to help us identify sponsorship. Again, I've asked you repeatedly about other decisions that you've made about using sponsorship. You seem to have an aversion to going out to local major companies and saying, how would you like your name added to this particular bowling green? And as a result of that, they'd be submitting funds in. These are things that we can actually go out and do. There might, in some areas of the city, there'll be a local person who might be willing to dig deep into their pockets. And that, so there are, there are ways of doing it, but there is not a one size fits all. Why won't you ask everybody to send in a whole lot of ideas? So that you get, because if you've got a thousand or so people or two thousand people out of three, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand people. So there's another, nearly, nearly eight hundred thousand people in the city who might have an idea as to what could be done. We don't, we just seem to go for small consultations that say, oh, well, we've had a, we've had a one percent, two percent return of our total population. That means we know exactly what the views of people are. So when we do get it, a number to you, and we do show that people are against something, you still ignore it when we're trying to argue something for you. So why won't you look at the options before? If you'd evaluated them and said, right, we discounted this one because it's actually only going to raise X amount, fine. That's a good answer to the, but all you've done is you've just said, oh yeah, well, it's possible. Well, how much could we gain through funding efficiencies? You've not set any figures behind that.
Sorry, Laurie, you're not able to ask questions, it's for the board members. Thank you. Councillor Rafik.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just coming back to councillor Anderson, I think, as I, related to my kind of initial statement, that all elected members were offered a meeting if needed. I do actually disagree with you on the fact that you assume that if you, if any member, every member of the council is entitled to put proposals or any ideas. If you come to me, if, if, if something that we think we agree with, it doesn't mean that we always agree on things. You know, that's, that's, that's the way that things work. But if, if it's something we'll always take on board, I think it, I, I find it difficult for you to say that you assume that we'll, we'll just brush it aside. I think that's not the case, councillor Anderson, and, and the way I work, certainly. I, I was certainly, you know, and, and, and I know the way, you know, Polly and James and their team to work. That's not what you would have heard if there was something we could do in terms of going forward. Now, sponsorships, again, if you've got good ideas, put them forward. You know, if that is something that we've not coming out and that's, then we'll, we'll do that. Recruitment, like any other sport, is for the clubs to kind of do that. We've actually been here before. I've had the portfolio for five years, I have the last ten years, two thousand. And I know we actually consulted back in two thousand and twenty one, I think it was two thousand and twenty one. And at that time, we decided because the council's budget position wasn't probably as, as same as now. We didn't go ahead, but we did ask the clubs to kind of, you know, do some work in order to self-maintain or to, to become some, to some point, cost neutral. But it's difficult, it's not been, the numbers have not gone up. And, you know, we are at a position where we, we've actually listened to, to the initial consultation. And we are at a second phase now where we're working with clubs individually to, to find a solution, a way forward for each one of them.
Councillor Anderson.
Just briefly on that one. If that was the case, the bowling club in my area, it was lucky because I got an email very early on to say that your bowling club would not be affected by these changes, which sent, which was utter relief for the community there. So they disengaged to a certain degree in what had happened. So those bowling clubs that you had said, look, we've looked at it and you won't be affected by this. There was a sense of relief to it. But if you'd said to these people, right, we're going to make this decision, we won't implement it till next year. You've got a year to increase your membership. You've got a year to work with your local ward members to come up with initiatives. You've got a year to think it through. Then we will implement that next year if you don't come up with firm proposals. If you'd said that and you were coming to me today, then I would be agreeing with you because you've then given everybody all chances to do it. But what you've done is, you've introduced, you suggested an, a budget amendment that was made. There was not, consultation did not start very quickly. If you'd started from the moment that you'd made that decision and started to consult on those decisions, we might have had a better debate citywide in terms of doing this. But you tried to implement it quickly because you don't want to necessarily hear contrary views because it doesn't fit in with what the plans are. So I would say, I would suggest, suggest to you, suspend this, don't introduce it this year. Write back to all the clubs and say you've got until September twenty twenty six to get your act in order. If you don't, we will introduce these measures. So that everybody's got a chance to then do something about it. Why can you not do that? Because we were talking about a hundred and forty thousand or something like that. That, in the total expenditure of this council, isn't a great deal. You showed as an administration this year that on a number of decisions, you did reflect back and you didn't progress with them, which were raising similar sums, which was to your credit that you listened and did it. What I'm saying to you is, why can't you offer this olive branch to the clubs out there? That by suspending it for another year or so, you've got a chance to do it. And if not, you've been given plenty of warning that we're going to do this. And it gives us a chance to work with our clubs.
Councillor Rafik, have you, would you wish to reply to that now or reflect?
I, I can reply to it and then, no, I think, you know, this isn't the first time, as I've said, you know, we've been here before in two thousand and twenty one, I think two thousand and fourteen as well. So, you know, the, the clubs have had, you know, obviously the opportunity to work together. And what we're saying now is, I think the conversation we had with the clubs, I think we've already spoken to about, or met with twenty seven clubs. The vast majority of the clubs are, I think, we had some really positive conversations going forward. I think there's still to be some work to be done going forward and we are working together. This is what is about working with clubs on a one-to-one basis and, and that's where we are at the moment.
Before I bring in councillor Hague, I, I think there's an aspect which would be helpful to us as a board to understand. Because today, there's been a lot of talk about why the decision to close greens is wrong. And that is effectively a debate for the council chamber. The debate that we're having today is, has the decision which has been reached, been reached in the right manner? So it's all about the procedure, it's all about how you have made sure that this is the best decision possible going forward. And I think one of the things which is confusing potentially is what it is that lead city council think success looks like. Because in the paper, you've talked about how we have, I think it's something like sixty bowling greens, whereas comparative authorities like Bradford have twenty, I think Sheffield have thirty. With the implication that potentially that is the right and sustainable number of clubs that there should be. Or you might say, no, we actually want to have sixty and our decision is there to enable sixty clubs to flourish. Which then comes back to the area around, how did you get to the thresholds in terms of membership? How would, how did we decide that it was going to be twenty within so many months? And then a higher level after so many months? Is it based on comparative data with these other local authorities? To understand what is fair and is working in other areas? Do you see what I mean? I think we're after that kind of understanding to, to demonstrate that the council has delivered the due diligence in terms of the issues that should be raised, for instance, around discrimination against old people. So that would be really useful to understand, to look alongside the consultation information that we've got here, if you're able to offer that. And secondly, there is, there's, there's the issue around co-production. How we need to make sure that any decision involves people and that their opinions are taken on board in the solution which is delivered. But there has been difficulty in understanding local information. So for instance, I've asked repeatedly as a ward member for the billing information for the heating of the pavilion for Woodlesford Bowling Club. And I am still waiting for that information, which I thought would be quite a simple bit of information to achieve. Because there is a suspicion, for instance, that these kind of costs are not being managed effectively for individual sites by the council. And therefore, devolving them to clubs might be a good idea. But without understanding the information to begin with, we can't understand what the scope is to reduce those costs. Do you see what I mean? So that's, that's two different elements. And I'll let you dwell on that while I bring in councillor Hague.
Thank you. I think probably Polly, you're best placed to answer this question. There's been some suggestion about rushing consultation, et cetera, et cetera. Not that not being, allowing clubs to, to have a sustainable basis. But in fact, during the consultation process, a decision was taken to protect the summer season so that clubs would have more time to, to respond to the proposals and come up with a more sustainable way forward. So do you think that was significant in terms of coming to this decision and ensuring that clubs can become more sustainable?
I think it was an indication that we were listening to what people were saying to us in the room. It was, you know, I think it was taking away the ability to have a meaningful discussion about the longer term strategy because people were too worried about the imminent closures. So we made that decision probably after maybe the third public consultation meeting. And also took the decision to reduce down that savings target to enable us to do that. And that was in direct response to the feedback.
And the comparative issue and what success looks like?
So, I mean, councillor, councillor Hague, I think, read out the kind of six, what success looks like, which is part of the report. There isn't, I think, people always think there's some sort of predetermined outcome, there isn't. If we can get to the point where all sixty one greens are sustainable, then that's a great outcome for the city, isn't it? Because it means that the membership's grown, we've got more people bowling, that's absolutely ideal. There will probably be something in between in reality. But actually, our, we've been honest in terms of what our, our success looks like for us. It is about minimising closure, it is about increased membership. And it is about kind of better cost recovery from a council's perspective to allow us to balance our resources across everything we have to provide. So that for us is success. So we're not saying. So we're not saying, let's get to what Sheffield have got, let's get to what Bradford have got. But I do think that it's right that we look at what others have got, and through the consultation, we also got the message through that actually other cities were coming to us because they were losing their bowling facilities. But when that's been subsidized by the Leeds taxpayer, then that is also challenging, I think, for Leeds as a council.
So could you clarify which of those authorities that were mentioned in the paper are actually implementing full cost recovery?
No, I don't know which ones are doing full cost recovery, I just know the numbers of greens, I don't know how they fund.
Have we done comparative market testing with other authorities as to levels of club membership and fees?
More around number of greens and provision as opposed to how they fund.
councillor Anderson.
Final question, then I'll hoist the white flag. councillor Dobson, in his present, in the statement, I've not got it in front of me, so I can't give you the, but can you give us the answers to the questions he raised? As an exec, as an ex-exec member, I think we need to find out whether he said things that are genuinely a problem and why those decisions were made because, just like any exec member, they will get advice from officers, they will take some of it, they will ignore others, they will take suggestions from officers as to where cost savings may occur, but then decide themselves that they don't want to go down that route. So can we have answers to all the questions that councillor Dobson raised?
I think councillor Dobson's questions were all asked a long while ago. Could you clarify which of the ones that you want to?
I've not got it in front of me, I just answered what you said.
Yeah. There you go. Why don't you clarify? Because there were about five or six points, and it would be good to focus on specifics to get a clear answer one at a time.
Assuming the council figures are correct, why was this not reviewed year on year? I can then go on, I mean, there's more to it, but hopefully that prompts you on that one. And also, as the council agreed with the bowling community a decade ago as part of a revised fee package, why did the department do to subsequently promote the support, if anything? He admits that when he was the exec member, there was an agreement reached to try and provide support. So what support has been given to the clubs in the intervening 10-year period? Who is responsible for the decades worth of drift where the work that was achieved in 2015 has effectively been unpicked? And I could go on, but I mean, there...
Yeah. councillor Anderson, some of that was, what's the word, it's rhetorical. But one aspect, and I think what you're trying to get at is, there is supposed to have been an ongoing series of engagement with bowling clubs to make them more sustainable financially going forward. What evidence is there that that has taken place of late? Because this feels like this decision is happening very quickly, is that the point you're making?
Yeah.
I'll answer that, Chair, if that's okay. I think since the executive board report in 2013-14, one of the things that was established was the Leeds Parks Bowls partnership. I believe one of the representatives from that group have written into scrutiny today and is part of your scrutiny papers. Officers facilitated that group, have met regularly with that group, have considered options for how participation can be grown, have supported initiatives such as the Big Bowls Weekend. There's been regular opportunities for the, through the Leeds Parks Bowls partnership to promote and advertise bowling clubs and the sport generally through our out and about leaflet, which again has been something we've been looking to pursue. I talked already about, around options that have been considered since that initial 2013, 2013 report. There has been closes subject to the agreement that was set out in 2013. There was a subsequent review in 2020 where we did an above inflationary price increase. It hasn't been the case that we've just simply left it. We set out to executive board price increases right through to 2017, I believe. We then reviewed again in 2020, and we've made permanent changes to supply as we've gone through the year. We've done that via the Leeds Parks Bowls partnership, who have been our organisation and represented stakeholders in this sport. Thank you.
I have had the honour of chairing the environment subgroup in the Outer North West Community Committee for, I think, since its inception, to be quite frank. And never once has anyone come to me and said, well, we're thinking about doing this, can you work with your bowling clubs locally in order to make them sustainable? Which, if you had done, I would have done, and I would have done it cross-party, because anyone who is aware of the way that I chair that, it is cross-party, it's not partisan, and that's the way I would have done it. Why did you not use that in all the years that the community committee has been in existence, to work with us as a community committee so that we could work with our local clubs in order to meet the objectives that you've just outlined, and we could have helped you down that path?
councillor Rafik.
Yeah. Now councillor Anderson, I sit on a environment subgroup as well in Leeds North East Inner, and the way we devise the agenda is we actually say who we want to, you know, come to our meeting. It's not that officers just turn up and that's how, that same goes to an extent to community committees as well. So if you thought that was very important, as a member of that subgroup or community committee, why have you not asked members to, or officers to come in briefly on that on our way forward?
Because I didn't have any, because I didn't have any concerns that were being expressed to me by anybody at that time, neither officers nor members of these clubs were expressing any concerns to me. So why would I make something up just for the sake of a political rummy? I'm not like that. I believe in representing my community and taking their needs back to officers on their behalf. That's my role.
Okay, thank you councillor Anderson. I think we'll all recognise that role. Do we have any further questions of officers or calling participants? Sorry, I can't, it's questions from board members. Okay, thank you very much. I think we've given that a full going over. So we now go to the next part of the meeting, which is to ask councillor Rafik to offer some closing comments based upon the discussion which has had today.
Chair, James Rogers, director, will be making the closing remarks. Okay, thank you, Chair. So some key conclusions and key messages from me listening to the debate today. So members have heard today, there are a number of clubs that are underutilized across the city, and that does add, as has been explained, financial pressures to the council at a time when we continue to experience significant financial challenges across all services. We recognize that where clubs might not be underutilized, it's often the case that their conversion rate from social bowlers to seasoned ticket holders is not sufficient for the council to maintain the club within the resources that the council has. Therefore, there has to be some focused effort from clubs with low membership in partnership with the relevant governing bodies to grow the sport if we wish to retain the high level provision that we have as a city. We are holding individual discussions with clubs and working through any of the utility challenges or moves to self-maintenance, we recognize that a one-size-all approach doesn't fit all, and that's why those individual discussions are particularly important. Whilst we do have a focus on the impacts on the elderly and health through this proposal, it has to be recognized that the council is still subsidizing the sport more than it subsidizes any other sport in the city. And in that context, we do need to acknowledge that there are more bowling greens in Leeds than in any other equivalent city. Therefore, we look at these proposals and believe that there is sufficient capacity for bowlers to move to other clubs if clubs cannot reach the minimum numbers, which should ensure that nobody has to stop bowling. We've worked closely with clubs as this proposal has progressed and have made amendments to our approach based upon the feedback we've received, which has resulted in the decision that's under consideration today. It's important that we review all of our spending across the council and ensure that we run things as efficiently as possibly can whilst providing services that local people want. And we are confident that the decision that's under consideration today does exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Dixon, would you like to provide closing comments?
Yes, please. So I feel like there's several things that I've put in the calling today that haven't been addressed at all and totally ignored, if I'm honest. I'll just name, I'll just list a couple. In terms of impact assessments, both on the game itself and on the derelict sites, what could potentially appear? Knocking one of those buildings down, for example, securing one of them buildings won't be cheap, and it could end up costing us more in the long run. I don't feel that's been addressed at all. I don't think, I don't feel like the fact that I suggested that this doesn't meet the Mamet City Leeds 2030 vision and Best City ambitions, that that's even been commented on at all. Totally, it looks like we're happy for that just to not be the case. And I don't feel like the, we've recognized the complexity of the sport in terms of, if I play Saturday League football, I play for a club and I'll pay my subs at that club. If I go play Sunday League, I'll also pay my subs at Sunday League club, but in bowling you don't, you just pay once. And in bowling, there's leagues on a Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, I believe, and maybe even more. And I, and another point I'd probably make is that you can enter a bowling league with just six players, so if you've got enough for a team, you haven't got enough for a ground. So how does that make that league viable if six-a-side league's no longer viable? I've got so many questions, they just keep coming. And I just, I suppose, one of the key things is that, as much as I've made assumptions that, which I accept, in terms of, I believe it'll close clubs, I also feel the council are making assumptions that clubs will be able to get enough members to keep them sustainable. And I think there is, it is a bit of guesswork on both sides, and I feel like we should work together to try and find out where the middle ground is and work on it. And I think there has been an element of that in the sense of meeting the clubs and trying to talk to the clubs, and I think that dialogue should carry on. But I do worry that there's some clubs who are going to take on responsibilities for their grounds, for example, in the panic to save their clubs when they're physically not capable of doing it, and the impact that might have on the few volunteers that are leading those clubs, because they're often run by one or two people. And the negative impact on those people is a worry to me. I've been, like, they may be fit now in the mid-sixties, mid-seventies, but in 10 years' time, are they going to be in the same condition to do it? So that's something to constantly be looking at. Yeah, and I just think the fact we've got more greens in Leeds should be something celebrated. Why do we have to be like every other city? Why can't we just say, well, actually, we offer more? Look at us, you know, we actually care about the health of our people. And if it has to come out of council tax, so be it, I'm pretty sure most people in the city will be like, I'm happy to pay for that. And there's probably other things they wouldn't be willing to pay for. And the other thing I've noted down is, the £90, I think, like, is actually getting undercut by any private clubs because they're paying a lot less, so that could have an impact as well. But, so last and not least, I suppose I'll just finish on the comment of, is, can we all just remember what are we here for? For me, I'm here to improve people's lives, and I feel like if we can get people healthy and active, that's going to improve people's lives and for the sake of the small piece of, little bit of money this is going to save, potentially, because I don't agree it will. Is it worth that risk? That's all, thank you.
Thank you councillor Dixon. We're now going to move to item seven, which is the outcome of the calling. I will now ask each scrutiny board member in turn to cast their vote on the following options. Option one is to release the decision for implementation, and option two is to recommend to the decision-maker that decision be reconsidered. So are we clear? You say one or two in terms of options? Okay, so I'll go around the table. councillor Hannan. councillor Hague.
Option one.
councillor Thompson.
Option one.
councillor McClosky.
Option one.
councillor Farley.
Option one, release.
councillor Maloney.
Option one.
Option one.
councillor, well, option one. councillor Singh.
Option one.
Option two.
councillor Harrington.
Option two.
councillor Anderson.
Option two.
And for the record, I would choose option two. So can we please have the result of the vote, please, Becky?
The majority decision of the board is option one, to release the decision for immediate implementation.
That is the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance. Item eight basically is confirmation of the date of our next meeting, which is currently set for the 19th of June, but of course, we will be actually introducing an extraordinary meeting to discuss other items before then. Thank you for your attendance.